Thank you all. In compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, notice of this meeting was given by way of notice filed with the township clerk, the home news Tribune, the Trenton Times, the North and South Brunswick Sentinel, and also posted on the voting board on the South Brunswick Municipal Building on January 12th. Also in compliance with the New Jersey case laws, all board professionals have previously been sworn in, and their testimony is considered to be under oath. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bafuko?
Here.
Mr. Conover?
Here.
Ms. Lapoah? Ms. Espital?
Here.
Mrs. Chacoli?
Here.
Mr. Vatone? Mr. Jacobs? Mr. Farhat?
Here.
Mr. White? Mr. Rafai? And Chairman Patel?
Here. That makes us six office. Two for six. Sorry. We got nothing on adjournment. There's no minutes of minutes to be approved or the reservations, so we're gonna go right to the real business. The first one being item nine, file number 23-045. That applicant is Mary Ann Torpe at Block 53.03, Lot 3, at Foley Waverly Place. This is an application for bulk variance to construct a 23-foot-by-31-foot deck and 12-foot-by-12-foot gazebo in a rear yard setback on a 21,700-square-foot lot in R2 Zone. Mary Ann Torpe. Please come on up to the front, take a seat. Take a seat and pull the microphone close to you so we get proper recording. Are you both going to...
I'm Mary Ann Torpe. This is my sister.
But you're both gonna say something?
She might.
Possibly.
Let's swear one by one.
Sure, okay. Ms. Torpe, would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, to help you God?
Yes.
And state your full name for the record?
Mary Ann Torpe.
Okay, and would you... Thank you. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, to help you God?
I do.
And state your full name for the record?
Joan Rush.
I'm sorry?
Joan Rush.
Joan Rush.
Are you S.H.?
R-U-S-C-H.
R-U-S-C-H, okay. Joan Rush, okay. All right, Ms. Torpe, the floor is yours. What we need you to do is explain us exactly what you're doing. Don't be shy. Don't be afraid making mistakes. We've been through many times. Tell us exactly what your plan is and what makes you to do it that way compared to the other way, which will not require any kind of variance. With meaning your hardship, why you wanted to do it that way and not the other way. That complies with the county courts.
Okay. Well, I've been a resident for South Brunswick for 35 years, lived there at 40 Waverly Place with my husband. My husband recently passed away. He's the one who had our deck built. The deck is rotting and falling down. So I just... And there was a pool there. The pool was my husband's. The past couple of years, we haven't used it all. I live now with just my daughter. So we hadn't had a lot of trouble to take care of the pool. It was a very big expense, so I decided to take the pool down and to replace the deck and to extend the deck out towards the back and to put a gazebo. And my property is surrounded by very tall trees on all sides. I can't see into any of my neighbors' yards. And I just wanted to make it nice for my family. I have three grandsons now that come to visit, and that's basically it.
So you... Is the deck the same size that it is that you're fixing, or it's bigger?
It's bigger.
Is it going over the pool area?
Yes.
Mr. Patel, if I may help. In the R2 zone, the rear yard setback is 40 feet. So the proposed deck extends over into the 40-foot rear yard setback, and the gazebo also extends, is entirely in the 40-foot yard setback. So the applicant is proposing that the gazebo is 20 feet from the rear property line. The edge of the deck will be 32 feet from the rear property line. So there's still a considerable setback that's existing in the backyard once the gazebo is put in and once the deck is put in.
And where are the trees in relation to those that you've made at the property line?
The trees are mainly around the edge of the property line. Having been there, from what I could tell, I don't think she has to take down any trees to install the deck or the gazebo.
Ms. Torpe, do you agree with what the professionals say?
Yes.
If that's the case, let's open to the question to the board members. Anybody has a question, someone on my right and then on my left?
Just one thing for the record. Is the proposed deck and gazebo, how much of that is just taking up space that was previously occupied by the pool?
All of it.
All of it. So basically, you're replacing pool in the setback with...
The same footprint.
Deck in the setback, okay.
Right, the same footprint.
And the only other question, then, is are you planning any additional outside lighting to go with this?
Not right now, but maybe at some point. It is kinda dark back there.
That's it?
Would those lights be on your building wall, or it will be freestanding?
No, it would just be, I think, around the shrubs to just light up so that you don't fall when you're walking back there. But I don't have any plans for that right now.
So more like accent lighting?
Right.
Yeah. We just wanna make sure it's not flood lighting that's gonna affect the neighbors.
Some people do put those in.
No, no, no. I know, I have a neighbor to my... To the side that has that flood lighting that comes in my bedroom.
Yeah, and with the... And with new LED technology, LED is great, except it's extra bright.
Yeah.
No, I'm not planning that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll have.
Questions to my left, Mr. Conover.
Are you proposing an addition? I'm looking at your drawing here. It says...
No.
I don't know what that is.
That was an addition.
That was actually in 2007. If you look on the bottom, you'll see where it's served. Where I signed off on it in 2007.
Yeah, that's from an old survey, and the addition is within the setback. So that... There was no variance needed for that.
So most of the deck and the gazebo is on the right side of the proposed addition that was built a while ago, but it's still going in the 40-foot setback. Any other questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion to open to the public, please?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Chacoli. Seconded by Mr. Conover. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody within the audience has a question or comment on these applications? Hearing none, I'm closing the public portion. What is the board's pleasure on these?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve file 23-045. The applicant is Mary Ann Torpe. It's Block 53.03, Lot 3. The address is 40 Waverly Place. It's an application for a bulk variance to construct a 23-by-31-foot deck and a 12-foot by 12-foot gazebo in the rear yard setback on a 21,700-square-foot lot in the R2 Zone, with the only condition being that existing drainage patterns not be disturbed.
Do you understand, Ms. Torpe, right?
Yes.
You can't let the water go left or right if it was going straight?
Right.
So the neighbors would not have any kind of questions or comments or things to meet? All right, I have a motion made by Mr. Chacoli. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Farhat. Roll call, please.
Mr. Espital?
I vote yes. I don't see any issue with this.
Mr. Conover?
I vote yes also.
Mr. Chacoli?
I vote yes. There's really no difference in the amount of incursion into the setback zone. It's just substituting deck for a pool.
Mr. Bafuko?
I vote yes.
Mr. Farhat?
Yes.
And Chairman Patel?
I do agree with my fellow board members. I will also vote yes, so it's six zero year application to approve. You're gonna have to wait for this board to adopt a resolution before you can draw a building plan with the new deck and new gazebo. But it should come... You'll be guided by the board professionals at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You too.
Mr. Chair, since we only have six members, you might wanna do the last one next.
I was going there.
Okay.
I was gonna jump our agenda. The next site I'm being...
Reschedule the...
File number 23-024. The applicant is Central Jersey Hindu. Wait a minute.
Wait... No.
That's for rescheduling.
That's for rescheduling only, yeah.
Oh, so we did have something to adjourn or...
Yes, we can do that at the end.
Okay, we'll do that at the end. The next one being file number 18-039. The applicant is Islamic Society of New Jersey at Block 96.47, Lot 57, 23, 114, and 130. This is a site located at 4145 Route 1 South. This is an application for amended final site plan approval with use in bulk variances to permit a 44,880-square-foot sports facility, 42,448-square-foot two-story addition to an existing school, and 24 multifamily senior units on a 16.45-acre lot in C3 OP and RM3 Zone. Counsel, good evening.
Good evening. I'm James Mitchell on behalf of the applicant, Islamic Society of New Jersey.
You got too many lots and too many zones. However, I understand we approved this application a couple of years ago.
Yes.
With several conditions, and I think you're coming back stating that the conditions are unmet.
Yes, we believe...
Or have been met.
We believe, and your professionals' review letter confirm, that we have conformed with all of the conditions of the approval, and we would request file approval at this time.
So this is more often administrating stuff?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that is correct. They've received all their permits that they needed to obtain, and also one of the conditions that the board had required was that they plant a evergreen buffer along Richard Road, and that was done in the time that was required, and they've been maintaining it. So at this point...
Are they still good?
Yes, everything's still good, and...
Nothing is dying?
There might be one or two, but those will be replaced. They've been doing a good job maintaining them, and anything that is dying will be replaced, so...
So in your opinion, they have fulfilled all the conditions, give you all the records, and that's in the township file?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Counsel, go ahead.
And that was... That's basically what I think we need to show at this point, and we would request your approval of the final site plan.
This makes it a lot easier. If we had ten, it would be a little bit more hassle. Any questions on my right or my left? If you all recall, this was approved a while ago, and, you know, in the past, we used to use both approval at the same time. Now it's been more or less bifurcated. Once they meet the condition, they have to come back again to get a file. Any questions on my left, Mr. Conover?
Okay.
If not, can I get a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Chacoli. Seconded by Mr. Conover. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody has a question or comment to final approval on file number 23-024? Seeing none, closing the public portion. What is the board's pleasure on these?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve file 18-039. The applicant is Islamic Society of New Jersey. It's Block 96.47, Lots 57, 23, 114, and 130. The address is 4145 U.S. Route 1 South. It's an application for an amended final site plan approval with use in bulk variances to permit a 44,880-square-foot sports facility, a 42,448-square-foot two-story addition to an existing school, and 24 multifamily senior units on a 16.45-acre lot in the C3 OP and RM3 Zones.
If I got a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Bafuko. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Espital?
Seeing that all conditions are... Have been met, so I vote yes.
Mr. Chacoli?
Yes.
Mr. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Bafuko?
Yes.
Mr. Farhat?
Yes.
And Chairman Patel?
Yes, with that, your final approval has been met. I'm gonna approve your final with six zero vote.
Thank you. Have a good...
Being an attorney, you know the drill.
Yes. Thank you very much. We appreciate all your time, both tonight and over the years on this application.
Thank you. Thank you, Mohammed, but not speaking out.
We won't take your more time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir.
I am going to take about five minutes break and tax one of the member because the next application would be better served if we had a full board. There's one member on its way. I'm gonna tax him, and if he doesn't, I hope we'll start in five minutes.
I don't know, Barad. I made it all the way from Montgomery County, Pennsylvania. I didn't leave till a quarter to six. I still got here.
Now I've got a guy, and his name is Dooley. He's my guy, and I love him truly. He's not good-looking, heaven knows, but I'm wowed about his crazy clothes. He wears tan shoes with pink shoelaces, a polka dot vest, and man oh man! He wears tan shoes with pink shoelaces and a big Panama with a purple hat band. He takes me deep sea fishing in a submarine. We go to drive-in movies in a limousine. He's got a port liberty and a 12-foot yacht. Ah, but that's not all he's got. He's got tan shoes with pink shoelaces, a polka dot vest, and man oh man! He wears tan shoes with pink shoelaces and a big Panama with a purple hat band. Now Dooley had a feeling we were going to war, so he went out and enlisted in a fighting corps, but he landed in a rig for raiding such a storm when they tried to put him in a hunter farm. He wanted tan shoes with pink shoelaces, a polka dot vest, and man oh man! He wanted tan shoes with pink shoelaces and a big Panama with a purple hat band. Now one day Dooley started feeling sick, and he decided that he better make his whippa out quick. He said, "Just before the angels come to carry me, I'll work it down and write and how to bury me." Wearing tan shoes with pink shoelaces, a polka dot vest, and man oh man! Gimme tan shoes with pink shoelaces and a big Panama with a purple hat band. And a big Panama with a purple hat band. Too many teardrops for one heart to be crying. Too many teardrops for one heart to carry on. You're way on top now since you left me. You're always laughing way down at me. But watch out now, I'm gonna get there. We'll be together.
The next application is file number 24-002. The applicant is Willie Patel Family LLC at Block 95, Lot 51.062, at 3 Port Court. This is an application for use in bulk variances to exceed the floor area ratio to construct this 4,751-square-foot single-family residence on a 1.01-acre lot in Arwin Zone. Good evening, Counsel.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, your professional staff, members of the public. My name is Peter Klausert. I'm an attorney with the firm Heilbronn Pate. This evening, I had the pleasure of representing the Patel family with regard to their application. I was actually the attorney with Sharif, the engineer, I believe, in front of this board years ago. We did the subdivision that's off of Sand Hill Road that this is a lot that's part of.
It's right next to McDonald's.
Yeah, it's right behind the McDonald's. Everybody knows where it is.
Full memory of that.
Right. So we did that application, and then what was kinda interesting about that application is I believe it was split-zoned at the time, which I think is why we were in front of the board. And then we came back in front of the board and did a minor, another subdivision to put the metro self-storage out in the front, and Brian Wazikala represented that applicant. The reason why that's relevant is we have a, you know, a previously approved by this board and designed modern improvements in the form of the roadway, the stormwater management system, and Sharif will touch on that a little bit. So we have some familiarity with the property. So your applicant is asking to build a house that's bigger than what's allowed in the zone under the floor area ratio standard. However, the lot meets all of the zone's standards, and the house can be situated on the lot within the building envelope that's created by the setbacks. That's... We're also asking for a larger garage, but none of it sticks its elbows out into your setbacks. We respect all of them. We respect all of your coverage standards. The house just has more floor area than what's calculated as permitted under the ordinance. I have two witnesses this evening. One is Sharif Ali from Amertech Engineering. He's our professional engineer. And then we have Mark Remsa, who's our professional planner. So if I could, I'd like to bring Sharif up. I think he's testified in front of this board before. Have him sworn and place his credentials on the record.
Sure will do.
Mr. Ali, would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth, nothing but the truth, to help you God?
I will do.
And state your full name for the record, please.
Sharif Ali, A-L-Y.
Sharif, you're an engineer licensed in New Jersey?
Yes.
Share with the board a little bit about your credentials and that they're still valid?
Sure, still valid. Graduated in 1985 from NJIT, received my license '89, and since '89, been practicing site plan and subdivision throughout the city of New Jersey, pretty much just about all counties. And I have been before the board so many times.
Mr. Chair, I would ask if the board would accept Mr. Ali's credentials as a professional engineer?
He's seen so many times, you can't forget him.
I beg you. Sharif, if you could, just take the board through the existing conditions and what we're proposing here.
So the... What I have on the board is sheet one of one. That's pretty much it, you know? That's a set that was submitted to the board members, part of the application. But I also have the original subdivision that you heard a little bit about it, Mr. Klausert. In fact, then...
You wanna grab the microphone?
Mr. Sullivan, can you help?
You just gotta hold the button until it turns green. Just hold it down.
There it goes. There we go.
Yeah. So that is... This lot here, in question, is the second lot on the right on the approved cul-de-sac at the time for Ashton State. So less activities on Ashton State was back October 5th of 2017, and we came before you for the third time for amended application to move the detention base into metro storage. If you remember, the application for metro storage, metro storage got the frontage on Route 1, and it's up and running for a while now, right next to McDonald's. So McDonald's occupied a corner of 1 and Sand Hill on the southbound, and we're right behind, so between the cul-de-sac roadway and McDonald's. If you also remember that we had an achieved lot. That lot is... Will stay in its condition, current condition, wooded, and will be maintained by the homeowner association. So the site right now is being cleared, is under construction. It's been while under construction. If you drive on Sand Hill, you'll see the silt fence or the black fence, and you'll see the site is pretty much opened up. So with a second lot, we're in the R1, 1-zone, 1-acre zone, and you heard Mr. Klausert saying that we meet the all-of-bulk requirement with the exception of the FAR, the floor area ratio, which is .12, and we have .21, and that is translate to about 4,750 square feet of a house. We also have another variance got to do with the garage. Your ordinance only allows three-car garage. Now, some of the large homes, they like to have four-car garage to keep their... Now, some of the large homes, you like to have four-car garage to keep their, say, anti-cars inside. So, this is very up to moderation dwelling. You also, in your packet, you will see the architectials for that. So, this is good stuff for southbound here. So, that's pretty much the application. One of the items in Mr. Antesal's report is to revise the plans and rather than having a driveway in the middle of the lot with a steep slope of almost 15%, to move it more to the north at the, with the common property line with the first lot that you're coming in on the cul-de-sac. And we agree to that. That will be, that will soften the slope on the driveway to somewhere between 8% to 10%. The other items in the staff report, I think that was Mr. Bitlack, is that drainage on site will be following the same pattern as was approved before. And the TS is going to be the same swells hugging the common property line. And that's basically typical of a good grading plan is that you send a runoff to the swell along the common property line out to the street. So, that will still be maintained.
Sharif, just one thing I want you to touch on. In addition to the fact that the, the house does not require any bulk variance relief from the setbacks, the lot itself is fully conforming to the zone. Is that correct?
Yes, it was all a bulk requirement, yes.
So, and that's as to width and area?
Yeah, the width, the area, the setbacks.
Okay.
And the building height.
Mr. Chair, I have no further questions of Mr. Ali's available to the board and the board's professionals for any questions they may have.
Mr. Ansel, other than the driveway movement on all the conditions or counsel? If you provide a new plan, moving the driveway from middle of the property to the north of them, would you be able to comply all the conditions in everybody's review memo that you have in the packet?
Yeah, Sharif has told me yes, but he's the one that will say yes.
Yes, we will comply with all the conditions.
Because I can see Mr. Ansel's point, yeah. Moving in on the north side, it makes it a lot more sense. You can still have a donor running around and come back on the same drive. I would imagine he wants a circular driveway, but not a double entrance. You just go in, make a circle in the front of the house. Instead of being in the middle, you go on the side and you can still come back and make a circle to the driveway on the north. Is that how you envision moving the driveway?
Will agree to the condition. The reason that we have it in the middle because we, we see the, this is going to be state-of-the-art, pretty much home that is going to be so beautiful. And we'd like to have the focal point as you're coming down the road and driveway in the middle is to look at the, the front door and the entrance of the, the front, you know, of the house. But that will create a steep slope of 15%, which reduce 15% in a lot of towns in Wachongs and that area of the state. So, we, we're not really shy of 15% and we can manage that. But Mr. Antesal feel that 15% is not permitted in the ordinance and we agreeing to that.
Well, what I'm, what I'm getting point is, the applicant can still have a circular movement once he gets in it.
Yes.
Are we talking on the same page?
Yes.
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 I mean, moving the driveway another 50 feet, you're still going to see the house from the driveway no matter what. It's not like a 400-feet driveway, 400-feet width that you want it to go in right in the middle. You're probably going to have a same visual coming from new driveway to the current driveway.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the applicant's very comfortable with that comment and making that change.
Okay, so the condition that you will comply with all the memory, all the conditions?
That is correct.
All right, any other questions? We're going to open our questions after both witnesses, so.
That's fine. Then I'll ask Sharif to sit down.
Let's bring on the next one.
So, let's bring up Mr. Remsa.
Mr. Remsa, would you raise your right hand? You solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, all you got?
I do.
And please state your full name for the record.
It's Mark A. Remsa, R-E-M-S-A.
So, if you could just share your professional qualifications. We're asking that Mr. Remsa be accepted as a professional planner.
Yes, so 2024 marks my 44th year in the field of planning in the state of New Jersey. In the, in New Jersey, I'm a licensed professional planner and landscape architect. Both my licenses are current and in good standing. With regard to my educational attainment, I have a Bachelor of Science in Environmental Planning and Design. I have a Master of City and Regional Planning. And I'm a Master of Business Administration with a concentration in finance, all from Rutgers University.
We'll accept you as a professional planner. Is that what your testimony is going to be?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the last time I was before this board was for a, the B&amp;T material application, which was held virtually, so it's nice to be here in person.
I fully agree, having a 44 years in the business, so do I. I'm a 44 years in engineering business, so I have no questions.
Thank you.
So, Mark, if you could, just take the board through a little bit of the preparation that you did and then your analysis of the variance relief that's requested.
Yes, so I observed, visited the site, observed the site. Also reviewed the plans that Sharif prepared. I also reviewed the municipal zoning ordinance and the master plan.
Thank you. So, we need floor area ratio relief and there's a bulk variance relief for having a four-car garage in lieu of a three-car garage. So, if you could take the board through the relief that's required and the proofs in support of it.
Sure. So, before I do that, I always like to give a little bit of context of where the property is. Sharif described it. It's my job to also tell you what surrounds it in terms of land use. So, to the north is residential, to the east is wooded land and farther across Sand Hill Road is also residential. To the south, we talked about that wooded lot and then that separates it from the commercial. That's along Route 1, which is the McDonald's. And then to the west is wooded lands. So, and that's important because that also talks about, I'll talk about the impacts, if any, that this proposal may have on surrounding properties. So, and also the other thing too, which wasn't really mentioned, was that the four-car garage is not going to be facing the public. It's not going to be facing the road. It's going to be facing a side yard. That's important also because that would have no significant impact on the public. And usually municipalities limit the number of parking garage spaces because they don't want them all facing the public road. So, in terms of the positive and negative criteria, the proposal does promote a number of the purposes of zoning that are in the municipal land use law, NJSA 40:55D-2. And I'll paraphrase them with, with the letters that are associated with it. So, first one is C, provide adequate light, air and open space. As you heard from Sharif, it meets all of the yard setbacks. It meets the required lot area. So, it does not encroach upon any of the yards and limits any of the light, air and open space on the property. G, which would be to provide sufficient space for appropriate locations for various land uses in case this is residential, it's the R1 zone and it permits detached, single-family homes, which is the application before you. I, to promote a desirable visual environment. I know aesthetics sometimes is subjective, but if you look at the architectural drawings that were submitted to you, they are, the building is going to be a very beautiful, attractive building. The agreement to move the driveway a little bit to the one side to have more green space out front, it's going to be a very attractive proposal. The next one would be J, to prevent urban sprawl. This area is already developed with residential development and the road is already in place. And so, we're not subdividing new lands or rural lands. In this case, it's going to be sort of a form of infill development. M, to encourage more efficient use of land. And that same description that I gave you for the prior purpose fits in there as well. And then I come back to A, which is because of all those other promoting of those different purposes of zoning, it promotes the public health, safety, morals and general welfare. So, the other part to the positive criteria is site suitability. Is this site suitable for this proposal? I believe it is. And first of all, again, it meets all of the bulk standards for lot area setback and so forth. Even though it's a little bit larger than what's permitted, it doesn't have any negative effect on, on the neighborhood. Also, you see the engineering that Sharif did and also with Mr. Antesal's comments that this site can support this proposed house. Negative criteria, two parts to that. One is what's the effect on neighboring properties? I described them to you. I see no negative effect at all on any of the surrounding properties by having a larger home and the additional garage attached to the home. In terms of your master plan, we must reconcile with that. So, I reviewed your 2001 master plan. It does recommend the density of one house per acre. And this is exactly what we're proposing. It fits the R1 recommendation in your 2001 master plan. Your 2013, 14 master plan amendments, it still designates the property for the same use. And then the reexamination report in 2018 had residential goals in its land use plan element section. And that is to propose to protect and enhance the residential character of the area, which I believe this will. Is the proposal compatible with the surrounding area? I believe it is. And so, in sum, there is no harm to, to the master plan or the zoning ordinance by this proposal. In conclusion, I find it promotes the purposes of the municipal land use law. It's particularly suited for this house, accrues no significant detriment to the public good and it does not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. So, that concludes my testimony on this application.
I just want to get two things on the record with regard to the negative impact on the surrounding property, the adjacent neighbors. One, when you look at it from a planner's perspective, the use is permitted. So, we don't have a use that we're placing in a zone where it doesn't belong that would have a negative impact on, on the neighbors.
Correct.
Like something that would generate odor, noise. It's a house where other houses are supposed to be.
Correct.
And then in addition to that, we don't get any closer than we're allowed to get to any of our neighbors. So, ostensibly, from a neighbor's perspective or a neighboring property owner, it respects the ordinance and would have the same view as a house that was a little smaller.
Exactly. And it provides still the air, light and open space around, around it and would not negatively affect any neighboring residential properties.
Thank you. I just wanted to hit on that a little bit more. Mr. Chair, I have no further questions. So, Mr. Remsa is available to your board and professionals as well as Mr. Ali for any questions you have.
Mr. Ansel, I have one question.
Yes.
The zone allows FAR to be .12. Where did you get these .21? If I'm doing 4,751 divided by 43,560, it still comes up like .11. Mr. Ansel, can you share some?
Oh, it's two stories.
So, 4,751 is just the ground?
Is the footprint.
Is the footprint. So, yeah, you got to double that.
Okay.
So, the actual square footage is probably around 9,000 square feet.
Correct. Yeah, yeah. The basement only gets counted if any one, if 50% of any one wall is exposed. And in this case, that, it doesn't meet that criteria, so the basement is not counted.
That answers, that answers my.
We're talking roughly 94,000 square feet.
Mm-hmm.
9400.
9400, yeah.
9400, yes.
94,000 would be a little, that'd be two acres of house.
That'd be something.
2.1, not .21.
Yeah.
All right, any questions?
I have a couple of questions. How accurate do you think the architectural drawings are, A1?
Excuse me, Safar?
Yes.
Hold the microphone.
How accurate would you say the architectural drawings are depicted in A1?
Oh, my understanding is that this is what the applicant wants to construct. That, that would be accurate.
Okay, how about the site? If you look at A1, it looks like you've got relatively flat land around the building for at least 60, 70 feet on each side based on the scale. Is this a flat lot or is it, as Mr. Sharif depicts? Because I know Mr. Sharif does an excellent job all the time. He really does. If you look at the site plan, the topograph, you go from 244 to 261 over about a 30-foot period. That's pretty steep drop. So, is the architectural is truly representative of what's going on here? Or is this, is this, it looks like a house on a flat area, which looks suitable. And it's actually a house on a hill, right?
I'm going to have to defer to Sharif because he's the designer of the property.
But I like Sharif. I don't want to put him on the house, but I won't put you on the house.
Okay, that's fine. I could put my landscape architect's hat on when I could speak.
No, no. I ask that because of the floor ratio, basement exposure.
Yeah, I think architect, most of the time when you get a rendering from them is that they try to create that background of the woods and this. They don't take into account the steep slope.
Right.
So, we all know that the cul-de-sac was created for Ashton Court has very steep slope. And if you go out there, you, you will see that.
Right.
So, the, and we talked about the driveway being on the high side of the road, the north side. That's what Mr. Antesal recommended. And, and the north side of the lot, and you can take that pretty much to the garage, that's pretty much flat.
Yes.
Because we're on the high side. And then you get the house, but you're trying to meet the slope. And then after that, you get that steep slope on the south side, as it shows on the engineering maps. So, so I see the accuracy on the, on the architectural to the, to the building, sure. Yeah, we know that they have it right. But the background, yes, the woods, yes, there is woods, but it's really depicting the grass and you wouldn't be able to see that.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, that's, that's the eye wash. The, the architecture itself is accurate. You're talking about the eye wash that's around it. That, that's what the architect.
Well, yeah, you know, for the ordinary person looking at these architectural, they say, wow, that's beautiful. But, you know, looking at the topograph, it's, you know, you've got 18-foot drop over about 30 feet. It is.
Yeah, they really, so you can take the half of the lot, including the building, including the whole entire backyard.
Relatively flat.
Pretty much flat. And then as you get closer to the going south on the road, then that's when you start getting the grades in, in order to make the consistent grades for what was proposed on Ashton. So, that is, that is all acceptable. You can water grass around the building itself. We have about eight-feet flat areas where you can walk around the building. But most of the enjoyment of the residence is going to be here. It's the backyard and the pool. And we depicting the pool on the plant too. So, that's pretty much the going to be, the rest of that is going to be all landscaping and some, some of this will be broken down by some nice regaining walls to give it a little bit of a taste of Ashton, just open there.
I have to say, as a landscape architect, I would love to work on a property like this because it has that interesting relief and it would have the ability to have a lot of nice, interesting landscaping. It lends itself to, to a very nice design.
Mr. Farhat, I think, not to defend anybody, you have a point where I think, if I look at this picture on, you said page A1? Put yourself somewhere around where just bottom of where it says S-H-W-D was 252. If you, if you're here and taking a picture, it should look flat, which is what it is. The one on the left, it's kind of deceiving, which is very wrong.
Yeah, he's just said in his testimony. Yeah, he's just said in his testimony, he's, you got eight foot on the left side of the house, looking here, you got sixty feet.
Yeah, but you, you, the picture on the left is not too far off the curve of that, so you can't, you can't see it. But, yes, we do have a point, and so does whoever just said that.
Well, and, I mean, with Mr. Antesal's, uh, report, there's no issue with the drainage. You, you're confident with the drainage pattern and?
Yes. They have not changed any of the drainage patterns that were, that were per the original approval.
Yeah.
And they, um, they are at about the same impervious that was part of the original approval in the drainage calculations.
Right, and it looks, I drove by the site, it looks like there isn't much cut fill, looks like, pretty much.
Yep. And you're utilizing the same basin?
Yeah.
That, um, Metro Storage has already built?
Yes.
And it's probably actually one of the nicest-looking basins in town.
Yeah, yeah.
Unfortunately, you can't see it from Route one.
We don't wanna see them.
Thank you, no further questions.
All right, anybody else got a good question?
Yeah, just to get them on the record, uh, in your opinion as a, as a planner, what is the reason for a floor area ratio?
In, in general, why, why would you have that?
Yes.
Uh, that, for, for consistency in, in neighborhoods, right? Um, uh, the, um, limiting the, uh, total floor area is for, um, making, making so a neighborhood would have, uh, some consistency across the board. Here, here, this road, it, it's now an open pallet and, uh, we have the opportunity to, to, um, uh, increase it a little bit on, on this piece of property.
Yeah, but I would say you're increasing it by more than a little bit. I know you've said a little bit twice, but it actually.
Yeah, it's almost doubling the FAR.
By seventy-five percent, that's not a little bit.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, the only other thing, and this is really for the applicant, and I know obviously this is intended to be a luxury home and it's not going to be used for any such use, but anytime we've had oversized garages or garages with multiple things, we always put in as a, as a, uh, one of the, uh, requirements that, uh, there be no commercial use and no storage of commercial vehicles. Now, I know that's not the intention of the current builder, but just to get that on the record, I would like that to be a condition of approval.
Very comfortable with that being a resolution.
I knew you wouldn't be, but I wanted to get it on the record.
Any other questions? To my left, Mr. Conover.
I'm good.
There's none, I, I didn't get a motion to open to the public for anybody who has a question on engineering and engineering.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Tricholi, can I get a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Mr. Conover.
Aye.
Anybody who has a questions, common, anything, on file number fifty-one zero, file number twenty-four dot zero zero two. I'm seeing two people, but nobody wants to talk.
That's the Patel family.
I, I, I don't worry, well, he's got, he's got a test out of a moon, so I could see why this building looks like that. Saying none, I'm closing the public portion. Can I get him, what's both pleasure on this?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, move to approve file twenty-four dash zero zero two. The applicant is Woody Patel Family LLC, it's block ninety-five, lot fifty-one dot zero six two, the address is three Thorpe Court. It's an application for use and bulk variance to exceed the floor area ratio to construct a, and I think we should have it on the record, is ninety-four, nine thousand four hundred square foot house rather than the forty-seven, is that?
Um, yes, I believe, yes, that is correct.
Okay, so we'll, we'll say approximately nine thousand four hundred is a little over. Uh, family residence on a one point oh one acre lot in the R-one zone with the conditions that it meets all of the board professional requirements and there will be no commercial use of, of any of the, at all on the site.
Mr. Tricholi, I can suggest?
Yes.
There was one discussion about moving the driveway, which you.
I thought that was one of the.
It's one of the conditions in the report, it'd probably always be good just to also just enumerate that since they agreed to do that one specifically.
Right, move of the driveway as, as noted in, in Mr. Antesal's report.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Farhat. Roll call, please.
Mr. Espatell?
Uh, I think the applicant meets all the conditions and, um, I, I think the house is very beautiful, probably the first of a kind in South Brunswick. We call it a house, but it looks like a palace to me. It's really nice. And I think that working with the landscape and the gradient, it's a little bit tough, but you guys were able to manage it. So I don't see a, an issue with this project and, uh, I vote yes.
Mrs. Shkoly?
Yeah, I, I frankly normally wouldn't approve an application that exceeds the FAR by seventy-five percent. This is in a rather unique area and we're very familiar with the projects that are going in, so I will make an exception to my usual operating procedures and vote yes.
Mr. Conover?
Oh, yeah, I agree, it's, uh, it is a unique type of house and it's within the setbacks and it's, for that area that it's in, I think it's fine, I vote yes.
Mr. Bafuko?
Yeah, I, I'm satisfied with the grading. I mean, with a house of this magnitude, you got a lot of slope there, but you're gonna have a lot of, you're gonna generate a lot of dirt with this big foundation. So I'm sure it's gonna, the house is gonna look like this when you're done. It don't look like it now, but it's probably gonna be looking like that, so I'll vote yes.
And, uh, Chairman, Mr. Farhat, I'm sorry.
Uh, yes, I think it's a very beautiful building, tastefully done. Uh, I always take the word over the civil engineer, over the word of an architect in the day. Vote yes.
And Chairman Patel?
Mr. Conover got it?
Yes.
Yes, he did.
I think I disagree with Mr. Espatell, this is not the first one. If you go as close as court.
It's big, yeah.
If you go as close as court, it just looks like these and it's way bigger than these, so you might wanna just keep running around in the town. If you can, run around and phone call, he will show you.
Big house?
Kevin knows where everything isn't down.
It's way bigger and, but it's on a lot bigger lot, too.
That's true, too.
So, but, that's, that's not a.
Someday you might go there to get your teeth cleaned.
However, I mean, knowing the area, to me, to me, it's look like, yes, it's in a built up neighborhood, but this was the only piece left. To me, it's look like it's in the boonie, only four people will, will go in and out, no one's gonna see from Route one. Maybe the folks on the back might see, but it's up on the hill, so it's, it doesn't impact anything and with that, I will vote yes.
Thank you very much, Board.
Six zero, you've got your score.
Thank you so much.
It's my mistake, I should've asked you if you wanted to take a vote or not because we only had six members, but.
I'm a big boy, I would've stood up for myself. I was comfortable.
I'm pretty sure if he was nervous, he would've.
I would give you that option, so.
I was, I was very comfortable, Mr. Chair. Now, I would've, I would've interrupted.
Mr. Chair, just remember, you got one application to carry.
Yes, we got, we got one more.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Hindu Association, yeah.
We got, the next one is, uh, file number eighteen dash zero three-nine, Islamic Society of New Jersey at block nine.
No.
Oh, Hindu, Hindu Association.
I'm sorry. File number twenty-three dash zero two, zero two four, Central Jersey Hindu Association at block ninety-six point zero four, lot sixty-seven point zero three, at four-two-four-zero Route twenty-seven North. I, I understand, we heard that two weeks ago, this is an application for amendment to the site to, uh, use and walk there, it's just to construct the second story, addition on a four-point-eight, four-eight acre lot on the Ottawa Zone. This will be, I guess, uh, we asked them to come up with some documents.
Yeah, they, right, that's the reason they need to carry it, cause I just received the documents, I haven't had time for Mr. Antesal or anybody to look at it yet.
So when did you schedule them?
So I asked them, I, I scheduled them for June twentieth, so I have a little time.
June two zero?
Yeah.
Yes.
With no further notice.
All right, so, um, with that, can I have a motion to carry file number twenty-three dash zero two four on regular reading of June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four without further notice? I got a motion from somebody.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Farhat, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Espatell, on favor.
Aye.
Anybody in the, here, there, and.
Good looker, Chris. Here, there, and everywhere.
Zero two four will not be heard, it's been carried to a regular reading of June twenty twenty-four without further notice and this will be your only notice. With that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion, yeah.